I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's close enough to five o'clock and we have a quorum and John has said he wouldn't be here, so we have everybody. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda for this meeting. We need a motion to approve the agenda or the motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is public discussion and Jason, I understand, oh, Jason's up here. I overheard him say Jason was gonna.
I think Jason was going to introduce.
I think it makes sense to do that in public discussion because then we're gonna close the meeting, so.
I do too.
Okay.
You're up there. Welcome to the bar.
This is Claire, everybody.
Great. Great.
I say Claire.
You did say Claire. Should we all do introductions? So since this is public discussion time, perhaps you'd like to say something about yourself?
Yeah, so I'm Grace, I'm senior at the University of Iowa, so I'm a social worker. And this is my last semester, so I'm doing my, to come with a university brand funded project called Social Workers and Survive in Libraries. And it's one of my memories, so I'm gonna be hanging out here, kind of doing some research, kind of doing some, some hands-on stuff just to see what social work integration could look like in Public Library.
Welcome. We heard about this, okay, last month we had, we were all very excited about it.
Yeah, so last month we had talked about Zach as well, the graduate student being here and he's now just being focused in a couple of other libraries, so. We have Grace, only good news, but I'm pretty sure more than.
My dear thoughts also. But I'm welcome.
Thanks, Grace.
Okay. Questions or comments for Grace? All right. I think at this point, the next thing on the agenda is the director's evaluation. And now, last year, the committee had a script all worked out for what they were gonna say. I did look at the, I did look at the stuff this morning, I don't have a script, but I. You do?
We got it.
Okay, good. I'll be quiet.
So I guess if this is the point where Ellsworth, you would need to request a closed session for your review.
I'd like to request a closed session for the evaluation.
I move, we adjourn through executive session pursuant to section twenty-one point five one I of the Iowa code to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury, that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're now gonna move to a closed executive session, so we can start.
I have a question. I was looking at the, I think it was the League of Cities, and it said something about like, do you have to have a roll call vote? Everybody has to vote to go into executives into closed session. And we need two-thirds, so. There we go.
So President Kirk.
All in favor of the motion to go into closed session?
I think you gotta ask each of us to.
We just say our name when we say our vote.
Yeah.
Oh, please, thank you. Carol Kirsch, yes. Claire Matthews, yes.
Tom Rockland, yes.
DJ Junk, yes.
Dan Stevenson, yes.
Hannah Schultz, yeah.
Robin Petzold, yes.
Joseph Massa, yes.
Okay, the motion was carried.
Karen. Black chairs, okay?
Close, close, close session. End of the closing session.
You're back.
Twenty-five, the rest of it maybe three percent better. That's a pretty good one.
Okay, so we are back in open session and I'm gonna let the committee lead the next part of the.
Then our first motion, let's see. I'm gonna sort of motion to vote in favor of a salary increase for Ellsworth. Of, of three percent.
Second.
Okay. So.
We don't know if this is a roll call or not.
I would say to CYA, let's just do a roll call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Carol Kirsch, yes. Claire Matthews, yes.
I'm rocking there.
DJ Junk, yes.
Dan Stevenson, yes.
Hannah Schultz, yes.
Robin Petzold, yes.
Joseph Massa, yes.
Let's help me juggle that one all our names. All right. The next item on the agenda does require board action to set the calendar for the next fiscal year, and this is the calendar for library hours of operation. Do we need to approve the, or does the salary do that?
Oh. I don't see any mention of approving the review. Yeah, but I wonder if we did that over those questions. Okay, moving on.
I'm okay. Just a question, whatever.
And I just, I don't have a problem with the calendar at all, but is one in-service day enough? Is that all you're allowed? Do you get to have more? Is one enough? I don't know, I came from public libraries and we had once a month in service or a half day once a month, and so just curious if one a year is working towards, is enough for you? That's your decision, not mine.
I think it's tricky, so history here sounds done one day, one full day a year. We've talked about advantages of doing two half-days or of looking at more. I think that the one day really hinges on desire to be open to the public as much as possible. As people who've been here longer might remember other conversations, but that's my guess. I would, I think doing two a year, especially during years of big changes, might be really beneficial. But knowing that there might be an openness to that change, I think we can certainly talk about what it might look like. And I'd also kind of be interested in benchmarking one of the libraries, but that's a good question.
Well, I, I do think that my observation of your in-service day is a tremendous amount of work goes into it. So that would be, to me, another consideration, a lot of work and a fair amount of expense with meals and things like that, so think that would be a consideration.
What I think too would give us the opportunity to do, to knock out some of the more procedural training. So instead of trying to fit half a day of more head-up, half a day of more like, we have to do fire extinguisher training to every year, or whatever it might be. It might allow us to put those a little bit, but.
Okay. Any other discussion about the calendar?
And this was, I did speak with Terry Byers, just to make sure that there were no union concerns about this, and she was, she gave it a thumbs up.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the calendars set forth in the packet?
No movement.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we all raise our hands before going on Zoom, or is this?
That bizarre. They really are associated now, yeah.
Training dogs, we're all trained dogs. The next thing in the packet is the director's report.
Only really one thing to add, I talked about the parking changes that was approval for the council meeting, it was affected. No, no conversations that I've heard about, so that could be nice to get it back, and we did save the signs, so it'll just be a matter of facilities picking out. And I've requested, I gave a little behavior update, we're very pleased to see that peak sort of re norming to a moderate level. Otherwise, any questions?
The legislative update, I guess is separate from the sort of introduced. The director's report. So that is the next item on the agenda.
So there are, there are a number of proposed bills, proposed legislation that we are watching very carefully, that we're feeling very concerned about. And right now, what we're trying to do is make sure that we have the best understanding of these that we can by reaching out to city legal, law library, state library, doing careful reviews of the text, and as becoming experts in the language that's used there. And you will see that in the packet, we included for summary statements that Anne wrote about one-twenty-six and three-twenty-one and eleven forty-five. So those, if people want to go through some of the more, the more content pieces of that, I think we've got a few people in the room can sort of read that and answer questions. There is an additional piece that was not on our radar when we created the packet, and that is Senate File three sixty-five, which is focused on property tax reform. This is a bill that specifically strikes a special library levy. And we'll tell you, there are some concessions for a scripted, you could combine, you could put the levy on top of the levy cap, but go down a certain percentage every year. Any way you cut it, it's, it would be a very negative thing for public libraries that rely on library levy funding, which ours, we have the full library levy amount. So right now, for this one, for the property tax reform, we're sort of checking, understanding, with our stakeholders that might be able to assist. And we will prepare a summary document that we send out, similar to what was in the packet for the others. We should have that ready by sometime next week. I think the amount of legislation on the table that is targeting libraries is significant and scary. And again, there really, there are threats to the access to materials, the governance and oversight. And now local library funding through the levy conversation. So those are, those are huge, huge parts of how we operate. I think that there is so much inside about each, each of these parts. I think that sort of our librarian parts want to look at the access to materials pieces. That feels like such a huge assault to everything that we work for. Also, logistically, implementing any of the restrictions that are being proposed would take huge amounts of people power. And that's sort of specialized people power. We wouldn't be able to simply say, oh, here's the roped-off session or section of the collection. This would be changing material records, borrower records, all kinds of policy and agreements that we have. And those, that's hugely concerning. But the other side of it, that's sort of less flashy, where does the state library report? And how is that governed? And then the tax reform conversation, those are sort of the other side of the iceberg, I guess. It's like, those are also so critical to the, to the operations of a public library that it almost feels like it's hard to know where to start. But Anne and Sam and other quarters have been working hard to make sure that we understand what we're working with. We have some action steps that we can take, and that we'll be ready to take action when there's some appropriate action to take. But Anne, do you want to add anything?
Was there a vote today at one o'clock? What was?
We had a subcommittee hearing to talk about the Senate Subcommittee eleven forty-five bill, which would essentially allow a system to be developed where the book was banned in one school district. A restrictive list would be developed, and it would therefore then be put in restrictive access in schools.
That's what I was thinking, that, do we know what?
So the Iowa Library Association sent Michelle Cruz, who was the School Library Association president, and I remember she spoke with our ethics and principles of how the logistics of that are just untenable. And we would need to have better definitions of what exactly is a substance of ban versus a challenge. But also the fact that an opt-out, I'm sorry, an opt-in restrictive list is still soft banning of books. And it removes the individual parental oversight jurisdiction, which is what the reconsideration processes involves to do. The Subcommittee recommended amendments. We were talking about a couple of other bills at the same time, so I'm going to talk with Michelle tonight to find out what those recommendations were, but then they didn't. It's the best that it go forward.
Okay.
So.
I was wondering.
And something of those, if you haven't looked at the actual text of these yet, they are packaged very carefully around you know, grooming children for, for negative behaviors, or keeping children safe from visually explicit acts and things that that any rational person would say, of course, we want to do that, and libraries should do everything they can to support that. But as you dig into that language and you start to sort of unfold what they're saying, there's, there's some clear focus on anything, it could be TQ-related, anything related to lived experience outside of white. Like people, I mean, the targets are, are there if you look for them. And that's the, I think, part of the scary part is you could easily cover this in a news story, making it seem like each piece of this is logical and beneficial to the community. And there's much more to it.
To me, the scariest one is the reorganization thing, because I used to work for state government, and I was a victim of the Department of Administrative Services putting in a new rule that, oh, by the way, if you're this kind of person and this kind of person, then you're, you know, an at-will person, and they could just do that. So that, to me, is a really, that's really big.
I think with the changing of who receives state library, state librarian, and they having control over accreditation standards, some of those bills that they are putting forward that would have restrictions on materials may directly tie to accreditation as well. So we could be looking at a time for maybe focus on our professional ethics, like, do we adhere to those, or do we lose accreditation?
And with the loss of some of the checks and balances that are built into the current governance of the state library, that loss of accreditation could mean significant things.
So, Carol, you know better than I, but what would be the whole of our lobbyists now is that there will be a phase-two reorganization bill, and that the voices of the community, those who have served on commissions, those who directly understand the accreditation status, this is the time for them to inform this group, because it's so, like, just the state library by itself is so, it's like, it's huge. So unless, unless those voices are shared, there's no way they can actually wrap their heads around all of this at the same time.
That's a lot.
Perhaps they shouldn't be voting in the first place if they're not.
Well, from outside libraries, what we do is check out books.
Are any of these groups, though, are any of these groups trying to reach out to the more conservative members of the state legislature to reason with them? You know, it's not gonna work, ladies and gentlemen, if we just say, I'm right and you're wrong. Because they will close ranks.
To answer that, as a Republican president for the Iowa Association and a Republican representative of the commission libraries, I've been speaking specifically to Republican factions. We also have a Republican lobbyist and a local lobbyist trying to do that work, but I can, I'm being urged, it says, some voices of them, they're hearing those discussions. Councils, boards, supervisors.
Yeah, there's some, some very organized citizen activity going on around, especially the material access, based on this. Moms for Liberty is a big one, and we're seeing some action in Iowa. Another group that's been gaining traction is, is Against Groomers. And I think that what the intentional work being done here is to find representation from all across the spectrum, so that people can, can speak to their groups, so that you can say, hey, I'm of the community, and this is, this is why this is a damaging thing, this is why we should restrict access. And I would say that it's, it's unbalanced right now, that the conservative side of the issue has much more organized thrust to it than on the side sort of arguing for more unfettered access and more parental or adult caregiver control. Which is, is interesting, and we know that that's being done at the state level in Iowa, and those groups are really active in working. For what's lawyers.
So I think to talk about your recommended action steps, and how we can actually synergize that skill. And how the board wants to approach this. If we're leaving this to the individuals, or if we want to take group action on this?
I think the board statement is appropriate.
I agree. So then, do we want to get a committee together to draft it like we did last time and start working on this? Because our timelines here are.
That indeed is the challenge.
I think a statement that would have some flexibility of being able to sort of apply it in different places as things go forward.
In the very short-term timeline.
I think some of the work that Anne has done in writing the summary statements would be a good, there's a strong sort of base for that, and you know, we'd be, we'd be happy to support that work as much as we could too.
I mean, we could have a, I can't remember now, can we have a special meeting by Zoom?
Or improve a statement.
Right, that's, I think that's the one where our city attorney thinks not. And the League of Cities, yes, but city attorney. Well, I mean, I wouldn't mind coming in for a quick special meeting to approve a statement.
I'd be open to that.
Because I don't think we can wait a month to do that.
Is anyone interested in serving on a committee to write the statement?
Can I?
DJ.
First to ask is, ILA has some talking points put together that would be useful to them.
Trying to decide what I can share. I have personally come out and done this, and I'm asking my networks to, but ILA is reluctant to do so because, like Sarah Wolford at the Department of the Line, we're not quite sure if the state library survives it. However, I feel like the greater goal is I have libraries, and that we really can't decide whether chips fall, we can always speak with private libraries. So we have talking points I've created, but probably not for my own.
I'm just trying to figure out texts that we can start.
I might need some from the, the reports that you guys sent, the call to actions that I get, because I'm a member, but the board may not necessarily get those, and of course, I'm deleting mine, but I'm trying to clean my email box. But that might be some good start, that a call to action has some language in there that would be useful. Yeah, if you would send it again, because I, of course, deleted it.
And as Ellsworth says, I mean, Anne's report has a lot of.
There's actually like full sentences I would use from Anne, thanks, Anne.
And I feel like this was an opportunity to really put something together that is accessible to a general reader. So much of the work around this is done in what I think is an intentionally exclusionary way. If you don't, if you're not able to navigate sort of a legal document or a process document, it becomes really difficult. And I think this group did a great job with the previous electoral freedom statement, sort of keeping it at a high level, but in a way that that a general over here could understand.
If it was on the other one, I'd be willing to be on this one as well.
That's two. Were you on the other one too, DJ? I don't remember who the, was there a third person?
I think it was you, Robin. I think it was Robin. I don't know, but does it have to be three?
It doesn't have to be three.
Because it might be, two might be enough to get the draft. To get it put together, and then anyone might have review commentary on it, does that sound okay?
Okay, so if we just, if we have a special meeting to approve the document, what are the constraints? How much notice do we need to give?
Twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hours, okay.
We obviously are far on the generous side of that for regular meetings, but this, right, ten, twenty-four hours for this one. And we would, we would post it here, and we could do an electronic posting, you know, for.
Okay, well, thank you to both of you. Can we put timelines on this? Yeah. Okay, are we gonna have a public meeting next week? Maybe we should give them a chance to talk to each other, because Claire needs to.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I do have to head out, but I'm not sure if I could do one week. I could maybe do like.
Advocacy day again.
Our seventh, which means you.
Ten days away or so. It'd be nice to have.
Oh, right, you're right, you're right. So, okay.
They have it posted by the.
That's good, maybe we could get it next.
Send it out even though, to before the seventh.
Yeah.
It's just the one that have a meeting to prove it.
I'm sorry, I have some.
Anne has the time, everyone to work with.
Anne on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Thursday night, we have Thursdays at this time, generally, well, we could just say next Thursday night. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I'm very flexible.
Actually, you can stay on the books, I think you can do it for sure.
Thursday the second we're looking at it.
But let's, I just do that on Thursdays.
It's not great for me.
I mean, it's gonna be as a ninety-second meeting, probably. Very short. We have to have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do it on Thursday the second.
Okay, these seconds, I could do it. I don't know if we have a quorum. You won't need me.
But I, I mean.
Can we talk about the?
Five-thirty, I have, I don't need to be here, we have a forum, but I, my son's conference till five oh five that I'd like to be here.
Or you want to do it on this?
Oh, it's conference, it's Thursday, isn't it? The second.
I have a conference till five thirty-two.
I just want to remind people that the. We're talking about a few people going up, it's gonna be here.
We could, I mean, I don't know if Friday is a terrible day.
The eighth.
Thanks, Claire.
Third, Friday.
Have you seen?
I'll be out of town, but.
Be negotiating with my school board. It's much Friday night.
I'd have to, I mean, normally a little, but you don't really come in for it, usually we don't.
But else, you don't need any of us individually, if you just need to get to quorum.
Right.
That's true, if, you know, if we can get.
Except we can't discuss it in advance as a group.
That's okay.
Because we break open meeting files.
No, but we can need to provide comments to.
Right, to recommend the group frame. Right, to recover the group frame. So Claire's not available on the second. Right? Didn't she just say that? She would not.
Maybe if the question is simply proving it.
Right.
We'll get five people on the second is the question.
I mean, really Monday the sixth would be, it would be very close, but it would be a possibility.
Yeah, I don't think the closeness matters really. Monday the sixth at five or five thirty, how many people could do that?
I teach them. I think though that that's a better option than the second because she has expressed a concern about getting it done with, you know, as quickly as.
I can take that work on Monday.
Why don't we just sit down a couple of days and see if we can get quorum for any of them? Someone set out a meeting banner and just.
Yeah.
So you need.
Cause John's not here.
Yeah, right. But is there something Jen can do first?
We could totally do that tomorrow and then I could take.
Just, I know, a couple of days, see which ones we form.
Now we get to quorum, yeah.
Okay.
Can I go back and so, it's, we're having a discussion also for the advocacy day being the day after. We need to make sure that's included in the conversation. If anyone's gonna be going up just to. And does advocacy day have to be done in person or can it also be done through phone calls or at distance?
Great question. So we did have lobby from home at every, every convention point person.
Yeah, right. Does anything like, if, if we find out, we can't get people up there, if there's, if there's a backup then.
Um, definitely, um, except for what we would do is have like DMs and you know, the language from us and we also have district maps if you sign your meetings and contact points and folks and the else.
If you know of a few people in the region going.
So far, I know that.
There's just not much of individual driving up.
You and I folks are going.
Yeah, I, I got a full car.
Sam, is there, uh, some kind of, uh, training or something? So I'm gonna go.
Great question. So typically that would happen at the state library, we would have just the hallway underneath the street. It happened this year, so, um, Bond Dragger, um, actually recorded me giving our, our agenda points. So you can watch that video, you can read it, but then, um, if, um, if you come a little early, like eleven thirty, I'm gonna be making myself available in the law library to talk to folks through that. As we greatly walk by district.
And so, so do you send people, so you send people to their own district or nearby districts?
So we definitely know Allison Cora will be there and, um, and so we probably kind of hanging out in the same area with her talking to legislators.
I mean, real honestly, our districts aren't the problem.
That's, that's why. Not Dr. Wackbo, it can waste our time, but that's why I created a presidential task force because we need to start focusing on those areas that don't have the representation to get folks there and to let them know their citizens will be there. So honestly, if we do create caravan situation, I might try to refer to books of different sizes.
I think this is a big issue. We shouldn't have a slide.
So we just have four people from the university who I would go with.
More on this?
I think beyond these fair attacks on libraries, I'm sure everyone in this room has already thought about this, but the attacks on the social safety net are also going to hit libraries pretty hard. And some of these laws are gonna. So I think we just need to be prepared for what that means for the work of our life.
Well, everybody's. Yeah, I'm gonna need a drink. Okay, well, let's move on. Yeah, people are noticing.
Yeah.
Well, the departmental reports are more uplifting, so.
Yes, that's a good.
She is not here, so you can't direct questions to her. But, since they've been very busy. I was curious as to how we hooked up with Mo Nee in a joint effort. I thought that was interesting. For the Lunar New Year's. Uh, oh, program.
That was in the media, I think.
They had been historically doing programs. I shouldn't talk about it, but I feel like, because I don't actually know the answer to that, but I feel like they were, they already had an active group um, celebrating and had seen our celebration for a bring care.
Okay, I wanted to thank Katie. These are clearly, of course, I appreciate it. It's new. I mean, I know you're a new person, you're pretty informal, but it's gonna help with it.
I can't believe you've only been here ninety days. Putting me on board.
Um, comments for the collection services report? The IT report?
Appreciate connectivity that says.
Okay. Katie's report? Quiet here. So right, the news articles. I think they're always interesting. I don't know how, who comes up with the comics and the extra stuff that goes with the pasties. But I think it was really, is that? She, she does it? Okay. And how are those recipes and stuff? How does she think those are? Some of them sound kind of awful, but. Okay. Um, moving on then to the president's report, I really don't have much of a report, but I am appointing a committee to nominate officers for next year, next fiscal year, starting July first. And John and Robin and I will, will be that committee. And I think we're gonna meet towards the end of March. Well, if so, please, if you want to nominate someone or self-nominate somebody, um, do let one of the three of us know. Announcements from members? We've got any announcements?
I said bring on spring.
Got really cold.
Yeah.
But we really dodged a bullet yesterday.
No doubt.
Let's see, committee reports, is there a committee foundation?
So you had a foundation meeting. Um, trying to think, we have anything or brought up from that team.
Well, the, the main talking point was the same report that I, I put in this, just, you know, a summary of my study with the state organization, we would act, I mean, I think it should go and I'm happy to say that, um, that, that our board went around and said, I think we agree with you, we're excited, we're, you know, we support you in this. And, um, so now I'm, uh, we're writing the business now, the organization and based off of that, that I already been working on in anticipation that they would the direction that I was wanting to do the organization in. So, um, and now really just assessing kind of what exactly some of those assessments, the investments are that we need to do. Digging into proposals from CRMs and, um, and so it's, it's, it's exciting for, we're at a where, where, where I think a, a wonderful, um, place of opportunity and growth for the organization.
Great. Communications, I don't, they're worth any. Next is to approve the consent agenda, the minutes from last month's meeting and also the dispersments for, for January twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to? Are there, first of all, are there? No, no discussion.
I would move.
All right. On, on favor? Can I just ask one question about the dispersments? I mean, I, I would still vote to, but it's towards the end where it says under library adult materials, hit box. What is, what is that?
We can get from the Friends Foundation, we'll make give money.
Okay.
Purchase specific books.
Specific, okay, okay.
Or a specific topic.
I either haven't seen that before or I haven't been paying. Um, all right. In that case, the next thing on the agenda is to set the agenda for the March meeting, which it looks like, it's too much on it right now. We do have a policy review and two departmental reports. Did, didn't we talk about adding? Oh, that, is that the policy we added? Couple of months ago, we added something to the March. Okay, all right. Um, does that need to be voted on? It does, okay. So I need a motion to approve the agenda for the March twenty-third, twenty-seventh meeting. All in favor?
Those seconds come fast at the end of the meeting.
Unless you're on Zoom and they don't come, then everybody's dropping. Okay, all right. In that case, I think we will adjourn.